Good evening and welcome to the special presentation section of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley. Today is October 1st. Our first presentation is a Business Spotlight for Unlimited Quest. When you arrive at Unlimited Quest, you enter a world where people are not defined by their abilities but by their determination and kindness. Unlimited Quest is a day program with three locations in Moreno Valley. They serve adults 18 and over who live with mental and physical challenges. They teach self-reliance and coach their clients with the life skills like how to write your name, gardening, art, music, games, and just feeling good. On any given day, you may find a smiling host willing to take you on a fantastic tour, a cooking class, or a card game. The staff are incredible people with big hearts who love to see their clients thrive. Ask any one of them why they do what they do and they will light up with big smiles and tell stories of people who, despite their challenges, love to live life and make others feel good, even if it is with a smile. Today we recognize Unlimited Quest with this Business Spotlight video. Please roll the video.
In life, everyone needs a little help. At Unlimited Quest, we provide that help. For 25 years, we've coached individuals on developing life skills in a compassionate environment. But we're more than that. We give individuals a space to discover their self-worth. Because at Unlimited Quest, we focus on abilities, not disabilities. Unlimited Quest: enriching lives, promoting choices, inspiring people.
And her crew? What am I, at the mic? And on behalf of the city, the City Council, we present you with this certificate from the City of Moreno Valley where you can post proudly at your office. And here's your USB with the video where you can post that all over social media to show the community what you're all about.
Thank you.
So I want to say thank you to you and on behalf of the city and the City Council for doing what you do to make this community very inclusive. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes. I just want to say thank you for the recognition. It was just incredible to have the mayor come out and just see what we do out there. It may not seem like a lot, you know, just to me, I go in and just take a little time out to just spend time with my individuals. I have amazing staff. I have an amazing team who helps out. So without them, none of this would be possible. And I just want to say thank you again for all the recognition.
We have some more speeches.
Joseph is actually the president of the Patient Advocacy Foundation, so he likes to speak.
On behalf of the clients of Unlimited Quest, I would like to thank you for this great presentation. I'm in the program now to get a job out on the outside, and I want to thank you all for supporting Unlimited Quest. Thank you.
Our next order of business is another Business Spotlight, Burger M. Located at 12848 Day Street, Burger M. or M. is one of Moreno Valley's newest food sensations. Owner Anna Negrete and her family are residents and longtime members of the community. When Mrs. Negrete decided to go into business, she knew she wanted to bring the new concept to Moreno Valley. The name Burger M. is Hebrew for many burgers. Burger M. is an innovative twist to the traditional burgers offering gourmet meats such as Spanish beef, lamb, dry-aged beef, chicken, and Angus beef patties. They also offer a vegetarian option with the delicious fellafell patty. Each burger is custom-made to order with premium topping options and the choice of traditional buns, lettuce wrapped or gluten-free. At Burger M., patrons have the ability to dine in, order to go, or have it delivered right to their doors. Having a party, company meeting, family and party boxes are also available. Burger M., the options are endless. Mrs. Negrete's goal is to continue to get involved in the community. Today, we recognize Burger M. with this Business Spotlight video. Please roll the video.
Burger M. is the place to satisfy your burger cravings. Whether it's classic beef, delicious chicken, something a little different, or customized, with over 40 million ways to build your burgers. No, really, 40 million. You won't find greater variety of taste in one place. And be sure to try our party box. It's like a party in box form. Burger M., always more than one.
Mrs. Negrete, would you please join us at the mic? Here's on behalf of the City Council and the city, your certificate, which you may displace proudly at your business, and the USB with the video that you can use for all your social media. So thank you for being here in Moreno Valley. If you'd like to say a few words and bring your family closer, you can introduce them to us.
So this is my family. So we are a family-based and operated business, and I'm really thankful to the city for recognizing our efforts. We want to continue to be part of the city and grow with you guys. Yeah, so all kids. So thank you again very much.
Thank you. Our next presentation is a Proclamation Recognizing Public Power Week, and Councilmember Cabrera will speak and present the proclamation to Marshall Ironman and Janet Olko.
Good evening. Today, we are Recognizing Public Power Week, which is celebrated all across the country on the first full week of October to recognize the benefits of citizen-owned utility companies. And just a fun fact, maybe Marshall can share a little bit more about it, but it's not very common that you see a city that owns their own utility, and we have that here with Moreno Valley Utilities, so just want to just mention that briefly. Among the benefits is the ability to help community stakeholders understand how they can better engage with their community-owned utility to directly impact the benefit from all its offerings. MVU is making great strides towards enhancing the quality of life for all residents and business owners for the City of Moreno Valley. There are more than 2,000 utilities across the country that are powered by a community-owned not-for-profit public power utility. MVU reliably serves almost 7,000 Moreno Valley residents and businesses. Collectively, we provide electricity to 49 million Americans. Moreno Valley Utility has been recognized by the American Public Power Association as a reliable public power provider by demonstrating high proficiency in reliability, safety, workforce development, and system improvement. Overall, Moreno Valley Utility is yet another area where the City of Moreno Valley is establishing itself as a regional leader poised for sustainable growth. Public Power Week is an annual celebration that recognizes the benefits of living in a public power community of high reliability, economic development, and local control. And so, the mayor and the City Council hereby present this proclamation, which reads... Actually, before I do that, I'd like to bring up Marshall and anyone from your team as well, if we can give them a round of applause as they come up. The whole team, everyone, come up. Another round of applause, please. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas Moreno Valley Electric Utility is a dependable and trustworthy institution whose local operation provides many consumer protections and continues to make our community a better place in which to live and work, as well as contributes to protecting the global environment. Now therefore be it resolved, the mayor and City Council of the City of Moreno Valley on behalf of its citizens and staff does hereby proclaim October 6th through the 12th, 2019, as Public Power Week, recognizing Moreno Valley Utility for its contributions to the community and encourage members of the community to join hands with more than 2,000 other public power systems in the United States in this celebration." And here tonight to accept the proclamation is our CFO, Marshall Ironman, Janet Olko, and the entire, or most of, the Electric Utility Division management team. Would you care to say a few words?
Yes, just one moment. As Councilmember Cabrera mentioned, Moreno Valley is one of the unique cities that actually has its own electric utility. That was a great step forward by the City Council in creating this and really provided us an economic development tool and a tool to help a lot of our residents. So as we recognize this week as well, we just want to recognize the efforts that the Council has done to bring this to benefit our community as a whole. And of course, I always want to thank the staff for keeping everything running and reliable. Keep the lights on, yes. Thank you.
Okay, the next presentation is a Proclamation Recognizing Fire Prevention Week. Councilmember Thornton will speak and present a proclamation to Paul Villa Lobos.
Good evening, everyone. So as many of you know, fires are happening more and more in the state of California. It's our new natural disaster, and our city takes this very... It's an emergency that we need to all address. And so, we have decided to make a Fire Prevention Week, which is an annual occurrence in the City of Moreno Valley and the Moreno Valley Fire Department, which partners with the National Fire Protection Association to raise awareness of the importance of preventing fires and knowing what to do in the event of a fire. The theme for this year's Fire Prevention Week is "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape: Plan and Practice Your Escape." The theme encompasses the small but important actions to keep themselves and those around them safe. A comprehensive approach to fire safety in the home, from taking preventative measures to remaining vigilant to the dangers of fire and having a plan of action in the event of an emergency. Such steps and actions greatly reduce the occurrence of injury or death as a result of fire. The Moreno Valley Fire Department has made great resources for learning about fire safety and spreading awareness of the importance of installing smoke detectors in your home. And so, in partnership with the Moreno Valley Fire Department and with the common goal of keeping our residents safe, the City of Moreno Valley hereby issues the following proclamation. So it's Fire Marshal Paul Villa Lobos, and all the other fire staff. Thank you, sir. How you doing? Nice to see you. Nice to see you. Nice to see you. Thank you. So whereas the 2019 Fire Prevention Week theme encourages residents to look for places fire could start and take proactive action to protect against fire, to listen for the sound of a smoke alarm and act quickly to reach a pre-designated safe meeting place, and to learn two ways out of every room. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and City Council of the City of Moreno Valley on behalf of its citizens and staff does hereby proclaim October 6th through 12th, 2019, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this community. All the people in Moreno Valley are urged to take a proactive role in fire safety in their homes and to participate in the many public safety activities and efforts of the City of Moreno Valley Fire and Emergency Services throughout the year. Here tonight to accept the proclamation is Moreno Valley's Fire Marshal, Paul Villa Lobos. Paul, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, no worries. Thank you. Councilmember Thornton. First of all, I'd like to thank the Mayor Pro Tem, Baca, the council members, for their consistent commitment to safety and public safety. And actually, your safety, when we say public safety, we mean you. So when you look around the room, that's who we're talking about. Second of all, we want to remind you that the theme this year for Fire Prevention Week is "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape." And a lot of times in the news, you see that the young, the little children are the ones that get the family out. You read about little eight- and nine-year-olds getting the family out and saving, saving lives and other family members. And it doesn't always have to be them, folks. It can be the parents too, and older brother and sister, or somebody visiting in the home. But what we'd like to remind you is that heroes plan escapes and plan, have a plan to be heroes. And we're going to recommend to you that you have an escape plan out of your home in case there is a fire in your home. You know what to do, you know who's where. If they're sleeping, if you have a disabled person in the home, you want to make sure you have a plan to help them out. If you have an elderly family member in the home, you want to be able to have a plan ahead of time. So you're not wondering, "What should I do? How do I get this person out? What are the escape routes?" You want to plan two escapes. So as you're planning your, your preparation, just in the event the worst thing happens, you know what you're going to do ahead of time. Also, you want to have a meeting place outside the home. So that for some reason you lose track of the kids or somebody in the home and you go outside to that meeting place, everybody is going to know exactly where to go and what to do because you guys have already prepared for it. So not having a plan is planning to fail. You've heard that before. The other thing is your smoke alarms. Check them manually. Well, once a month, let's tell you this. Check them once a month, change your batteries once a year, usually around the time of daylight savings time. And when we go back and turn the clocks back and forward is a good time to check them and replace them, make sure you've got good batteries in your alarms. Sometimes you don't think about it because they're always there, but I'll tell you what, they can, they can save your life if they're operating. You read in the papers a lot of times in different places, residences where the smoke alarms weren't working and people didn't get out. We want to make sure you're safe and that you understand that you can be a hero, and you can be a hero without having to be a hero. So that's what we recommend for you. And thank you very much, and I'm honored and privileged to serve as your fire marshal here in Moreno Valley. Thank you.
Thank you so much for everything you do. Let's give them another round of applause. The final presentation is a Proclamation Recognizing Community Planning Month. Councilmember Thornton will present the proclamation. And if we can have Chris Ormsby join her.
So the American Planning Association has recognized the month of October as National Community Planning Month. This year's theme is "Planning for Infrastructure That Benefits All," which highlights how well-planned infrastructure projects strengthen communities, boost the economy, expand opportunity, and promote equitable development. I would like to express the gratitude for the work of our planning commissioners and the staff with the City of Moreno Valley who work so hard to ensure that the development within our city is directed to appropriate locations and designed to align with the goals of our city. In order to appropriately recognize this hard work in the commemorate National Community Planning Month, the mayor and the city of the City of Moreno Valley hereby issues this proclamation. Whereas the City of Moreno Valley recognizes the many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners of the City of Moreno Valley and extends heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Moreno Valley on behalf of its citizens and staff does hereby proclaim the month of October to be Community Planning Month in the City of Moreno Valley in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. The next Planning Commission meeting will take place on Thursday, October 10th at 7:00 PM, and we encourage all citizens to attend the meetings and apply to sit on the Planning Commission to have an active voice in the planning of our city. Here tonight to accept the proclamation is Moreno Valley Senior Planner, Chris Ormsby. Chris, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the City Council, for recognizing this month as National Community Planning Month. I'd like to take this opportunity to bring up all of the planning staff really quickly. I know we're a little short on time, so I'm going to keep my words very brief. I could spend a lot of time talking about what planning is, but what we are really celebrating today is the role that planning plays in creating great communities. And in my view, Moreno Valley is a great community. I've worked for the city for 28 years, and I wouldn't be with the city today if I didn't feel that way. There's opportunity for growth and unlimited potential. I'm going to cut my other remarks a little short because I'd actually like to introduce the staff. Much of planning is really about the staff working with the public, public engagement. And so, I think it's good for the, the public to actually meet the staff and kind of see what we do. So I'm going to take this opportunity to introduce our planning technicians today. They would work with the public. If a resident is, has a home business or wants to add on to their house, they would be seeing Summer, Letitia, or Grace at the front counter. Also, we have some interns who help with the counter and on the phone, so you might be talking with Austin, who's far over on the side there, and Kimberly. We also have then our current planning team. We have Gabriel, Jeff, Julia Dakota cannot be with us tonight, and Claudia Enrique works on both planning, current planning and policy. And I believe our vital support staff cannot be here tonight. So then, I just want to introduce Sean Kelleher, who's our other senior planner, who supervises the current planning team. And he's going to say a little bit, a few words about what we're doing this month as outreach and public, I should say promotional outreach with regard to the celebration. So Sean.
Thank you, Chris. Sorry, I'm not very good at winging it. I'm not very good at winging it. So for National Community Planning Month, the Planning Division has placed a number of posters in the lobby of City Hall. These posters identify the great places that are here in the City of Moreno Valley. You can also find these same posters on the city's website with links to Google Maps, which will provide you with directions on how to get to these places. Additionally, during the month of October, we will be showing, there's a series of short videos of various community planning topics that will be posted on Facebook, Instagram, and YouTube, as well as ran on MVTV3 for you to view and learn more about what we do. Thank you all.
And that concludes our special presentations, and this regular City Council meeting will Good evening and welcome to the Moreno Valley City Council meeting. The joint meeting of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Service District, City as Successor Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, Moreno Valley Public Financing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The City Council receives a separate stipend for the CSD meetings. Today is October 1st. It's about 6:07 PM. And I now call this meeting to order. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Frank Wright. Please remain standing for the invocation which will be given by Pastor Abel Cordero of Moreno Hills Seventh Day Adventist Church.
Mister and Mrs. America, let us pay homage, honor to the colors of our flag representing the greatest nation in the world in the following by saying I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, it amazes us that we are alive until today. We thank you for your grace. There is no doubt that we get up this morning, we prayed for your guidance and for safety, and you just did. Because of that, we thank you. We thank you for the privilege of prayer. And we thank you, dear Lord, for your so bountiful mercies are coming our way. Today, we stand in humility. We stand in submission to this God who owns this world, who created this earth. And to him do our praises in our thanksgiving and our acknowledgement. In the meeting tonight, I know it delights you, dear Lord, that they would like to start deliberation by being assured that your presence would be here. Twice a month, they would like to invoke your presence before they deliberate. So today, dear Lord, in humility, we come to you. And I pray that our every discussion here will be discussion that will be inspired by you. Give us words that would encourage one another. I pray for every officer here in our city and in this chamber and everyone here participating. Father God, we pray for a city where like God, his throne is full of justice and righteousness, where is, where is a city of truth but mixed with mercy. I pray for every officer. Give them wisdom that only comes from you. May our agenda today be a agenda that will only be for the betterment of this community and for everyone. We hide ourselves behind a very reverent and humble God. We pray in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen. Amen.
City Clerk, Rocco?
Yes. Councilmember Thornton?
Present.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Present.
Mayor Protembaka?
Here.
Let the record reflect, Councilmember Marquez and Mayor Gutierrez are absent.
Thank you. Staff introductions, please.
Pat Huck is not a city clerk.
Catherine Vigil, Deputy City Clerk.
Marshall Ironman, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Martin Kazanowicz, City Attorney.
Tom DeSantis, City Manager.
Alan Brock, Assistant City Manager.
Mike Lee, Economic Development Director.
Hattie Evans, Acting Community Development Director.
Dave Lilliver, Acting Commander.
Up to a lot of fire chief.
Patty Solano, Parks and Community Services Director.
Michael Wolf, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Thank you so much. Reminder, the city is currently offering Spanish translations at the back of the room. If anyone would like to avail themselves of the devices, they're there. Before, before we hear public comments this evening, I ask and encourage everyone participating to keep their comments respectful towards other, especially towards the individuals at the podium speaking. We embrace and support the First Amendment right to free speech, including everyone's right to speak at this meeting and share his or her views about issues concerning our city. But we can accomplish more as a city and as private citizens by being civil and respectful toward one another in this meeting. I ask that speakers bear in mind that comments are limited to three minutes for each speaker and that you refrain from duplicating comments already made by others other than to note that you agree with a comment. Public comments on matters on the agenda will be taken up as the item is called for business between staff's report and city council deliberation. Those wishing to speak on any subject not on the agenda, under the jurisdiction of the city council, may speak now. Those wishing to speak should complete and submit a blue speaker slip to the bailiff. There is a three-minute time limit per person. All remarks and questions shall be addressed to the presiding officer or to the city council. The city clerk will call three names at a time. Please move to the front of the room when you hear your name called. In order to preserve the meeting decorum, the council and staff will not respond during public comments. And council comments or questions to staff will be addressed during the council closing comments. City Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes, we have eight.
Eight, okay. Can you call the first three?
Yes, ma'am. Keith Howerton, Daryl Terrill, and Nick Philippelli.
Evening. You that know me know that I'm not a complainer. I haven't complained to the city council much until now. On, in June, I live in San Diego Mobile Home Parks. Councilwoman Cabrera is my councilman. And I pulled out and parked my pickup just outside the entranceway. And when I came back at the end of the day, I had a ticket saying that I was in violation of street sweeping. And I looked around and I could see no signs whatsoever. So I made an appeal and sent it in, even took pictures showing that the only sign visible was in the next block and had to drive down to be able to read it. And I checked some of the other streets in our area and most of them have a sign just before you enter the Colts Act. Ours doesn't. And in fact, probably two-thirds of Santiago, nobody parks on it, but that's where the signs are. And the last third is where everybody parks. When I come home this afternoon, I noticed there were 17 cars parked out there and there's no signs there telling them. I've talked to others that have gotten tickets for the same reason. But the thing that really I thought, that was important, I, I was visiting someone up on Hubbard, which is off of Ironwood, runs north there. And almost up the top, as I came down, I noticed that there's a sign in every block notifying where the street sweeping is. And so I, I thought, well, I wonder if it's just this street. So I went over to another, Davis on the other side of Indian, also runs off of Hubbard. And every block has a sign notifying where the street sweeping is. In the section that, where most of the people park, because we have a lot of people from the Santiago Park, park their cars out there because they don't have room to park in their parking place. And where all the cars are, there's no signs. And where no cars are, there's plenty of signs. And I just wanted to let you know, I think that's unfair.
Thank you, Mr. Howerton. And we'll have the city manager get back to you on that one. Daryl Terrill, followed by Nick Philippelli?
And Adriana Kingston.
My name is, I'm Daryl Terrill. I live here in Moreno Valley. Good, good evening. First, my heart and prayers goes out to Diego and his family and to the students and parents of Landmark Middle School. I know these past weeks and days have been difficult for our community. We have experienced great trials before. And with every test, we have found the capacity to not only persevere, but the courage to hope again. Diego has become that symbol of hope in this community. Our community has been the story about ordinary people who dare to hope. As our past have shown us, we have been defined by our hopes and not our fears. Whenever times have seemed at their worst, that's when we look to the future and not with fear, but with hope. That's why I want Diego's family and all of you in this room and who are watching at home to know that whatever you're going through in your life, just remember one thing, that you're never alone. Because we are in this together. We rise and fall together as one community and one people, bound by a belief that our destiny will not be written for us, but by us, by those who are not content to settle for the status quo or who have the courage to hope again. When I think about hope, I end up thinking about the teenagers and the college kids who watch the civil rights movement unfold before them on television sets across this great country. I'm reminded that they would have seen the marches and heard the speeches, but they also probably would have saw the dogs in the fire hoses of the footage of the innocent people being bitten within the inch of, beaten within the inch of their lives. Or heard the news about the, the four little girls died when someone threw a, a bomb into their church. Unconsciously, they knew that it was safer and smarter to stay at home, to watch the movement from afar. But they also understood that these people in the south were their brothers and sisters and that what was happening was wrong and that they had an obligation to make it right. And when the buses pulled up for a freedom ride down south, they got on and they took the risk and they changed this country. And honoring Diego and others like him, to the voiceless, to those who have lost hope in our community, as, as though, as tough as times as they may be, I'm asking you to believe in yourself, in your own instincts, in your own sense of possibilities, in your own sense of what is right. I'm asking you to get on your capacity to lift our sights. Because again, we're in this together. We rise and fall together as one community and one people. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Philippelli? Followed by Adriana Kingston?
Good afternoon. I am a newer resident of Moreno Valley, formerly of Beaumont and Riverside. Wanted to talk about the possibility of rezoning most, if not all, of Moreno Valley to being able to have small farm animal and even those already labeled as domesticated farm animals such as chickens. As what I've seen through the maps, pretty much none of Moreno Valley is zoned to have any of that. Both cities that I previously lived on, a lot of those people, you know, small businesses have been made. A lot of opportunity is given from that, from that opportunity of having those animals. So, short and sweet, to the point, I just, I would really like to have you guys look into rezoning most, if not all, of Moreno Valley to have in that, to give us opportunity to do what we want to do with our own properties. Like I said, domesticated animals should be, you know, we should have that right to, to own them and have them on our property, just like a dog or a cat. So, yeah, goats, pigs, chickens, any of those. Yeah, horses, if the square footage is right. Because on the City of Moreno Valley website, which I've looked at, they, they give a lot of measurement to square footage needed, but there is no home with that square footage that is able to even have it. So why have the measurements on the City of Moreno Valley if we cannot, if we can't have them anyway? So I, I would suggest that if we do have the square footage, if we are within, you know, or with, outside of the limits of, if it's a school zone or anything that, that might be, hospital, understandable. But if we do have the square footage, we should have the right to own animals that we want to have, have farms that we want to have, and, and build opportunity for ourselves that we want to do. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Adriana Kingston, followed by Marcia Narong?
Narong?
Narong.
And Barbara Baxter.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of the council. My name is Adriana Kingston. I'm the General Manager at Think Together, a nonprofit organization dedicated to bringing after-school programs and other expanded learning opportunities to the City of Moreno Valley. Think Together not only provides a safe place for children to go after school, but also homework help and academic support, healthy snacks, physical activity, and opportunities to explore new subjects like robotics and coding. We see every day how children benefit and families depend on state-funded after-school programs, which are supported by California After School Education and Safety Programs, or ACES for short. On October 24th, we will be participating in a nationwide celebration called Lights On After School to showcase the important role after-school programs play in the lives of children, families, and communities. Our mission is to secure a sustainable statewide funding solution for after-school programs and ensure that the children of the City of Moreno Valley and all over California have access to high-quality and well-funded after-school programs. I would like to personally invite you to meet our parents, students, and staff and experience the power of after-school by attending our Think Together Lights On After School Open House event on October 24th from 4:00 to 5:00 at Bear Valley Elementary School. Come see for yourself how the lives of children and families are impacted by after-school programs. Thank you for your time and we hope to see you at Bear Valley for our celebration on October 24th.
Thank you so much. And it's on our website, by the way, and social media.
Thank you.
Okay, well, next we have Marcia Narong, Barbara Baxter, followed by Bob Palomares.
Good evening. My name's pronounced Marcia Narong, just for the record.
I apologize.
That's okay. I'm here to speak about the state of the city. I hear from the city publications that the city's doing wonderfully, that we're in the back. I hear from the city publications that the city's doing wonderfully, that we're in the back fin- black financially. And then I go home and I live on the northeast end, and I wonder, where am I living? Because the roads are in horrible shape. I did a quick survey of all the streets between Theodore Street and Nason Street, north of the freeway. And I couldn't find one road that didn't need some kind of repair work. I grew up in Huntington Beach. My parents' home had been repaved three times in the last sixty years. And I don't say just a slurry coat or patch, they go down to the bottom. I looked up on Google about how often should pavement be replaced? And they said every fifteen to twenty years, depending on the work, or on the use. One street in my neighborhood has been replaced in the last thirty years that I've lived there. So when I talk to the city roads people, they say they don't have enough money, they don't have enough resources. And if they ask, they don't get what they need. So my question to you is, how come we're in the black, but we can't have our infrastructure taken care of? Right now, Moreno Beach is going to be repaved. I don't know if it's going to be taken down to the dirt like it's supposed to be. But there is a sign that says three-ton limit. We have a nursery nearby, and we have a lot of people that drive big semi trucks through the neighborhood. And I'm sure a lot of these trucks are over the three-ton limit. And I want to know, is Moreno Beach going to be upgraded so that it can take the tonnage? Or is it going to be a pothole mess in a year? And I mean, it looks like a third world country over there right now. Onto other things about what makes me feel I don't live in the golden city that I hear it's supposed to be is when I go to the stores or the post office. I can't take a shopping cart out of some of the stores because they get stolen. I've never been at a place that wouldn't let me take the shopping cart out to my car. I go to the post office, they don't even have stamp machines that you can use. And I said, well, can't you put one inside the inner wall? No, we have too much crime here, we can't afford that. I've never been in a city that didn't have post office change boxes where you could buy stamps with, you know, coins or a credit card. In our neighborhood, we have to check all the time for mail theft. It's just ridiculous. You don't know if important mail's getting stolen or if you're getting it. And the break-ins and stuff, my, you know, it's really sad that my neighbors have had to get security systems and put bars and doors on their, you know, metal bars on their doors before, you know, they felt safe enough to live there anymore. And we've had homes that were rented on both sides of us that had, shall we say, Section Eight people living there, and they turned them into communes with drug dealings and thefts in the neighborhood and everything. So where is this beautiful city?
The city manager get back to you. Thank you so much for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Next is Barbara Baxter, followed by Bob Palomares.
Good evening, Barbara Baxter, President, Trailseekers Moreno Valley. Hey, I've been here on several occasions to tell you about the upcoming Disaster Preparedness Expo. Well, we had our expo last Saturday. We are so blessed to have Dr. Thornton come out and represent our district. All were invited, we were kind of sad, we didn't see all of you there, but it is what it is. Anyway, we had a great time, we had some good networking, we had some good fellowshipping, and the Trailseekers made a little bit of money for a change. We also had Sheriff Bianco there, who was the star of the event. He did an opening statement that just made everyone feel that in the event of an emergency, your first responders have you and we will all be safe. And it was very important that during that time, we had some fires going on, which is why we couldn't do our fire suppression, CERT wasn't able to come out. Unfortunately, disasters happen when you're having a disaster expo. So there it is. But for next year, we are planning next year's, I'm hard at work on it already. The same day we concluded, I started. So mark your calendars, and we expect to see more participation next year for September 19th, 2020. Hindsight is preparation is our theme, 2020. So that's our sweet, now a little bit of bitter since I've got a minute and a half. That was the cost that my champion, Patty Solano, it's, I'm not embarrassing her. My champion got for us for a four, one, two, three, four, ten to two, four-hour event insurance. $1,529.55 that the citizens of Moreno Valley threw their taxes into the coffers of the city that came out of the budget for the Parks Department paid for our four hours of our event. Four hours, it comes out to maybe about $300 per hour. This is ludicrous. Now, we're under a gold standard that we have to have this extra insurance, it's a big deal. We went through eight insurance companies to find one. One that charged us $1,529.55. I say it again and again and again, because the people need to hear it. It's ridiculous. And we want to have this event again. We got good, good comments on how wonderful the place looked. We were shiny as a new penny. But this is ridiculous. Something needs to be done about this gold standard that is not really a gold standard in any other city than the imaginations of Moreno Valley. I'm going to stick a pin right there, because my time is up, and I'll see you in two weeks and continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baxter. Bob Palomares, Sandra Murphy, and Luis Palomares.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, council members. And first off, I want to thank the police chief and the fire chief for all the great work they do day in and day out. And the reason I'm here, I want to, I was at the last school board meeting regarding Diego. Everybody knows about that. And I was, I wasn't surprised, because I was there in 2017 regarding an incident in this school district. But I was talking to them about a little girl in the Yacipa-Calamasa Unified School District, Rosalie Avila, that had committed suicide after she had been bullied for over two years. And you know, I got assured by the school board in Moreno Valley that, oh, we have a real aggressive anti-bullying program here. And I heard a lot of testimony from a lot of parents there at that school board meeting, that it's not true. There's no aggressiveness to combat it at all. They all were complaining about they reported bullying and nothing was ever done. And I believe that. Because President of the School Board, Hogan, said, at that time, because everyone was speaking about Diego, he says, oh, we're going to have some workshops for all the parents this following Wednesday. But unfortunately, Diego had passed away, I believe, that evening, the day of that school board meeting. So they canceled it. But that's what they always do, they try to smooth it out, put it under the rug, and do what they've always done. There's absolutely no accountability. As a matter of fact, aside from Diego being victimized by poor policy, the two kids that were accused of it, or that are accused of it, are also victims of the school board. You know, the P, the parents need to organize and vote them out, recall them. But it seems to me that there's something underlying in between the schools and the school board. Why is it that the school board can say, no, we're aggressive? But yet, when it's reported, the teachers don't do anything, or the principal? Because I don't know if it's the teachers, but there's a problem. And you know, it needs to stop because it's been going on for a long time, years. So I'm just here because I want the community that's listening to know that they got to organize. If they want change, it's not going to happen unless they make it happen. And like I said, they got to vote them out or recall them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palomares. Next speaker, Sandra Murphy and Luis Palomares.
Muy buenas tardes. Estoy aquí.
I am here.
Para hablar de lo que ha pasado en Moreno Valley.
To speak of the things that have happened in Moreno Valley.
Con Diego.
With Diego.
Es algo muy triste que tenemos que enfrentar como comunidad.
It is something that is very sad that we had to deal as a community.
Nuestra comunidad hemos, no nomás la comunidad, yo también.
Not just the community, myself too.
Hemos dejado de importarnos la vida de los demás.
We have forgotten to care for other people's lives.
He tomado en mis manos con otros muchachos jóvenes.
I have taken interest in other young people's lives.
Invité a jóvenes a que hiciéramos un movimiento.
I asked them to join me in a movement.
Que sometimos al school board.
That we proposed to the school board.
Que se llama Diego Anti-Bullying Petition to Moreno Valley.
That is called Diego Anti-Bullying Petition for Moreno Valley.
Esto que tiene que pasar es un cambio.
This that just happened, it's, it's, it's a movement for change.
Nomás ninguno de nosotros.
Not, not one, not one more of us.
Can stay silent. Que tenemos que estar hablando.
We have to speak, we cannot be silent.
Este movimiento es para proteger.
This movement is to protect.
Todos los niños.
All the adolescents, all the kids.
En las escuelas.
In schools.
En las calles.
In the streets.
En sus casas.
At home.
Porque bullying.
Because bullying.
Toma lugar en donde quiera.
Takes place everywhere.
Y una de las cosas que nosotros no tenemos ni nos hemos preparado.
And one of the things we haven't prepared for.
Es hacer una ley.
Is to make a law.
Unas regulaciones.
Regulations.
Que puedan hacer ese trabajo para los inocentes.
They can be there to protect the innocent.
Esta petición.
This petition.
Tiene tres páginas.
It's three pages long.
Que les voy a dar a ustedes cada uno para que la lean.
I will give one to each of you so you can read it.
Y la cuarta página es para que todos en la comunidad firmen.
And the fourth page is for people's signatures.
Porque esta petición, el goal, o, como digamos, la meta es veinticinco mil firmas de Moreno Valley, mínimo.
The goal of this petition is to have.
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand.
For Moreno Valley. Pero el goal completo va a ser acumular cien mil firmas.
But the main goal is to have a hundred thousand signatures.
Para llevárselas al gobernador de California.
So we can take it to the governor of California.
El cambio está aquí.
Change is here.
We're not looking for any more changes, change is here.
Change is here.
Okay? So, con esto, le invito a toda la comunidad que está ahorita mirándonos por televisión.
I want to invite everybody in the community that is watching us right now.
Este es un movimiento que vamos a proteger a la próxima generación.
This is a movement to protect the next generation.
Sin la próxima generación, no estamos avanzando.
Without the next generation, we're not moving forward.
Estos niños.
These kids.
Debemos de tener el corazón, para un corazón muy duro, para no apoyarlos y cuidarlos.
We would have to have a heart, a really tough heart, not to support them.
Y hacer lo que tenemos que hacer como comunidad.
And to do the things that we must do as a community.
Todos tenemos hijos, tenemos nietos.
All of us have kids or grandkids.
No podemos quedarnos ya callados.
We cannot remain silent.
Cambios se hacen cuando la gente ve, escucha, y acciona.
Change, change happens when people listen and make action.
And look.
And, yeah, and look.
Cuando no está algo que no está funcionando.
When something's not working.
Una de las cosas que estamos haciendo, vamos a dar las camisetas.
One of the things that we're going to do is to give out shirts.
Los moños.
The revens.
Que indica el azul, que estamos en contra del bullying.
Blue to signify anti-bullying.
El verde.
Green.
Que estamos dando esperanza para esos niños.
They were giving hope to those kids.
Y el oro.
And the gold.
Significa, hay que enseñar the golden rule.
To teach them the golden rule.
No hagas nunca lo que no quieres que te hagan a ti. Gracias.
Do to others as you want to be treated.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Next speaker and final speaker is Luis Palomares.
Wow, Luis Palomares, community activist, it just breaks my heart hearing all these people come and talk about the issue with Diego. I hope we close the meeting in memory of him today. Again, it's happened in our schools. It's got to stop, and we're already organizing. I'm organizing parents and other advocates and students, we're doing that. And I'm glad Mrs., the last speaker, doing the same thing. We need everybody, because no more children should die in our schools for this reason. No more children should commit suicide. It shouldn't happen in our city. It's a sad day in Moreno Valley that this has happened again. And if, I said to somebody I was talking the other day, and I said, wow, if we had a school board like we have a city council here that care about kids, Cabrera's always involved with the students. Mrs. Baca's an advocate for students with special needs and students of all walks of life. And, you know, Dr. Thornton, she's, she's a professor at the college also. Our mayor, specialist teacher for the longest time at the college also, RCC was there also. You care about kids, it would be great, and you're doing the job, what you're doing for students today, what we've seen today, and all the things you put in, play for our students here. You're doing the job that the board should be doing. They can't even protect our kids. My God, what's it going to take? Well, it takes a village, and it takes people that care. And I'm an activist and advocate for students from, well, thirteen years back, and I still do that. And I come to the council also. So it has to change in our community. And on another note, this council has done an excellent job with anything that got to do with students. They got all kinds of different programs for our students. Our staff has done a great job. We care about our community, we care about our kids in this community. You have gotten so many programs for our students in this community. You're doing a great job. And I mean, my hat's off to you, I applaud you. Thank you for all your work and everything you do for our city. And now with this new golf, little golf thing I seen at the last council meeting, you talked about it, Dr. Thornton. It's great, it's great, so many good things. I love to come up here and talk about the great things, the positive things. But sometimes it's, it's hard not to bring this up in between it all. So thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Palomares. And that concludes our public comments on non-agenda items. At this time, would any council member like to make their reports or comments? Okay, then we'll move on to the next section of the agenda, which is the Joint Consent Calendar, Section A through E on the agenda. All items listed under the Consent Calendar, Sections A, B, C, D, and E are considered to be routine and uncontroversial and may be enacted by one motion unless a member of the city council, community service district, city successor agency, for the Community Redevelopment Agency, Housing Authority, or the Board of Library Trustees requests that an item be removed for a separate action. The motion to adopt the consent calendar is deemed to be a separate motion for each agency and shall be so recorded by the city clerk. Items withdrawn for report or discussion will be heard after the public hear, public hearing items. Any items that either of you would like to pull for questions or comments? Mr. Cabrera, Councilman Cabrera.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I have three items, just for a quick comment. It's A8, A13, and A14.
Okay, A8.
A8 actually has to do with repairing roads. A eight actually has to do with repairing roads, and earlier we heard from a speaker, uh, speaking about that, uh, over on the east end. So I just want to, uh, point this out that we are awarding a contract, uh, through the Public Works Department. I think it's, uh, let's see, one point six million dollars, uh, for CDBG areas here in the city. Uh, so this is for residential roads where we're going in and maintaining them, repairing them. And so ju- just want to let you all know that, yeah, just last year, we allocated an additional million dollars out of a surplus that we had in our budget. So we're trying to do, uh, more above and beyond of the funding that we're getting from state and the federal agencies to try to fix our roads, because they are, they are pretty bad. And I completely understand what you're saying. I see them every day as well. I try to report the potholes as many as I can. When I'm driving on my way to meetings, on the way to school, wherever I'm going, I, I try as much as I can to stop on the side of the road when I see that pothole and report it. Um, so also a quick plug, um, we do have the City Moreno Valley app where you can report potholes as well, exactly on the map where it is, and it's, it's a very quick response. Um, so I also want to thank our Public Works Department for, uh, having our folks working overtime to fix our roads. Uh, moving on to, uh, A thirteen, that is, uh, the general plan update. This is something that I've been looking forward to for a very long time. It's a very big deal. Um, if any of you get an opportunity, I would recommend going and looking at our staff report. You can see, um, the, the, the firm, what other general plan updates they've worked on, what kind of work they do. And so this is a, a big deal, because we're looking at what the development and what the plan will be for our city, how we're going to grow over the next ten, fifteen, twenty years. This is not just any regular general plan update. Uh, we're actually adding a few, uh, pieces, two in particular. One has to do with the environmental justice element, uh, which, as we all know, is very important, uh, trying to balance economic development with the environment as well. And the second part that we're adding is the economic development part, to see how can we bring more employment here to this area, what kind of jobs are gonna be coming in the future, and how can we prepare our population to fill those jobs that earn higher wages and have better benefits. So i- it's a lot of things that are coming, a visioning process to get your feedback as well, uh, because we want to hear about all that. So we'll keep you posted on everything as it comes, but, uh, we're looking at a completion of sometime in 2021. So looking forward to that. And the last item I just want to mention as well is A fourteen. The last speaker here, uh, Louise, was just talking about programs for our youth. We, uh, are fortunate enough to get additional funding from the state, and that's what A fourteen is about, for the ACES program. Uh, so we're getting additional funding for that after-school program for our kids here in the city. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware of that, because there, there are good things that are happening here in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cabrera. Do we have any public comments on the consent agenda?
Yes, Luis Palomares on A fourteen.
Luis Palomares, community activist. Okay, um, last we got in, well, the last council committee I didn't come to, but I seen it in, uh, this was on the first reading, I believe. And wow, it's great. I mean, they were here tonight, you, they talked. And what else can I say? You people are on a, on a roll, and you're doing so much for our community, and so much for our, our students in our community. I, like I said, I wish we had a school board that thought and acted like you did and put all these things into play for, for our students. It'd be great, and maybe it's time that those school board members need to go. It, it's, it's time, because you're doing a lot of things that they ain't doing. And they can't, like I said, they can't even protect our kids, but on another note, you're doing a good job in all this stuff that you're bringing to our city for our students here. And there is so many programs, and I hope before, um, you, you dismissed today, you mentioned some of them, because not all the same people come all the time, and there, I don't know, there's at least a good half a dozen or more of, of what the mayor has put into play, what the council members have put into play, and all the things you do for our students in this community. Thank you, thank you again.
Okay. I would, um, entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Make a motion.
A second.
Please vote.
Motion passes three ayes.
Okay, thank you. On item A three is the mayor's appointment to the Traffic Safety Commission. Is Marla May Tim here? Can you please stand and be recognized? Okay, let's give her a round of applause. Thank you so much. We need volunteers for our commissions. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to item I, reports, city council reports. And I will be reading the, um, one for the March Joint Powers Authority. I'm providing an update for the, um, September twenty-fifth meeting. At that meeting, the commission approved an extension of the lease with U.S. Vets, which is operating in the former March Air Force Base Barracks. The two thousand eighteen lease provided five one-year terms. This is the first of four annual extensions, and that concludes my report. And we have, um, Marla, uh, council member, Dr. Thornton, and you have RCA, RTA, or RCHCA.
RCHCA on behalf of Councilwoman Marquez, Riverside County Habitat Conservation Agency. So items covered at the RCHCA board meeting, Board of Directors meeting on September nineteenth, include, um, as of June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, the city has collected a total of seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars in RCHCA fees for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. These funds are provided to the Riverside County Habitat Conservation Agency for conservation purposes. The Habitat Conservation Plan provides an educational outreach program to increase awareness of threatened and endangered species in Riverside County. As a part of the program, in October, the RCHCA will be holding the second of its annual celebrating endangered species events for approximately one thousand students from schools in Riverside County. Yeah, the second report, uh, on behalf of Councilwoman Marquez, also from Riverside Transit Agency. So good news for transit riders. Now you can buy RTA passes from anywhere using the token transit app on your smartphone. Customers can purchase passes for immediate use or for future trips on all RTA fixed route buses. Through the month of October, RTA is offering a thirty percent discount on your first mobile pass purchase. Please visit www riversidetransit.com for more details.
Thank you. This next item is the city manager's report.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Protam, members of the council. Um, as a resident this evening asked about, uh, road repair and the schedule, our Public Works Director will reach out to Ms. Narag and share a copy of the five-year pavement, uh, management program with a map showing all of the repairs that, that are coming. Um, our council has invested millions and millions of dollars in road repairs over the past few years. As Councilmember Cabrera pointed out, uh, tonight's agenda is a perfect example of another one point six million dollars in CDBG funding, creative use of external funding to repair local streets. Um, and this also allows us to accelerate one point six million dollars' worth of road repairs. As we complete projects like this ahead of schedule, we'll be able to then move other projects up to be completed more quickly. Um, and, and this is both arterial roadways as well as residential streets. Um, mobility is a key to economic development as well as quality of life, uh, in our community. And, um, I want to reassure residents that, um, that this is a major priority for their city council and the city staff, and we're committed to, to continuing to succeed, uh, in that realm. Um, my last comment tonight in conclusion, I, I would urge everyone tonight to cast your eyes uh, toward Box Springs Mountain tonight and tomorrow night. Uh, the M is lit in orange, and this is in observance of Bullying Prevention Awareness Month. Um, we offer this important symbol to the community to encourage all of our residents to focus on this very important issue and on the steps that we as individuals can take to make, to, to make our, our community focus on what's best for our future. And our future are our youth. Thank you, and that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. City attorney?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Protam, Councilmember. Very briefly, uh, there was a speaker who was complaining about the cost of insurance for a, um, event that was held at our equestrian center. I wasn't sure if she was complaining upset at the city for paying that insurance or upset the insur, the insurance company for charging. Uh, it's an ultra-hazardous event. It's an activity that involves horses and people and, um, insurance charges in accordance with the risk. And, uh, we must make sure, we have standards for our insurance, and must make sure that city resources are protected in the event an accident happens, and if, and someone is injured, if entitled to compensation, that they receive it. Um, the event went forward with successful, um, city's funding of the insurance made that possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the, um, reports and comments from our council members. Dr. Thornton?
Tom, is it possible you could also talk about the animal zonings from the one constituent that talked about that?
Well, uh, wha- what I can say, uh, Councilmember Thornton, is that, um, the, the residence comments are very timely. Uh, as was pointed out, we are embarking on a general plan update. And so the kind of feedback that, that the gentleman, um, shared with you this evening is exactly the kind of feedback that we will seek throughout the process. Um, the general plan update is really the community's opportunity to help shape what we're going to be like as we continue to grow up. And, um, those comments are, are right on the money, and, um, we look forward to synthesizing all of the various feedback and, um, and bringing about the vision that the community and the council hold for Moreno Valley.
Thank you so much. Um, so there's a couple, um, of, of announcements. So, um, I was thinking also while we're recognizing, or about to recognize Fire Week, and we're talking about being prepared, um, also for individuals, I think another component we don't talk about too often is having an emergency fund. So saving up, um, just in case you're having to vacate your home and, um, have to stay in a hotel or tra, um, having to, um, live away from home for a while. Having enough money saved up to serve as a cushion for that. So at the same time as you're planning an exit plan and making sure your, your smoke alarms are working, um, also ensuring that your emergency fund, um, is invested in. Um, I do want to thank Barbara Baxter for putting on the Equine Disaster Preparedness Expo. It was a great, um, turnout for the first one. Um, it is something that we do have, you know, residents do have horses. Um, and so, um, the, the amount of people that came to the event, um, they all were in that world, and I thought that it was timely, so I want to thank her for that. Um, I do have a meet and greet coming up, uh, on October thirteenth at the Equestrian Park. So if you were not able to make it to the Equestrian Park for the Equine Disaster Preparedness Expo, you can come and meet me. It'll be ten thirty to noon. Please bring your chairs, bring umbrellas. It's gonna be hot? Well, maybe not hot, but there's no cover, so. Um, uh, I recently, um, coordinated with the California Department of Veterans Affairs, CalVet. I want to thank them so much for coming to Moreno Valley and hosting the very first, um, Veterans Pathway to Citizenship Workshop. So there's a number of, um, veterans who have served in our country who are not U.S. citizens. Because of, um, their honorable service to our country, they do, um, get prioritized in the citizenship, uh, um, process. And so, uh, CalVet came for the first time to Riverside County and hosted a Pathway to Citizenship Workshop to show those veterans. We had over fifty-eight veterans in attendance with their families, um, which says a lot. Um, but I was, um, I want to thank Councilwoman Cabrera for showing up to that. Um, and I think that it was, um, great that we were able to host it in our city, and I'm hoping that, um, that they'll be able to come back to, to soon too. Um, save the date. We'll be having a veterans memorial ceremony on November eleventh at eleven a.m. I will be the speaker. So you'll hear a little bit about me, my veteran service, so, uh, please, uh, come out for that. We have a great veteran. If you've never been to our veterans memorial service, um, you know, it's, it's really great, so I really hope that you all are able to come out. And lastly, I wanted to thank Mike Lee and the Economic Development Team and Jackie. Um, I, they, they coordinated an amazing business roundtable for me last week, September twenty-fourth. It was hosted at Safe House Brewery, which is a business that's been open about four months now. Um, they have over, what, twenty different beers on tap, amazing, amazing food, bogogi fries. It's ama, their chicken wings are amazing. Um, and we had a great turnout. We had over about forty, forty to fifty people in attendance. Business owners throughout District Two came, and, uh, we were, we were there for about two hours, and they were able to hear from me. I was able, able to answer their questions. They got an update from Mike on the economic development, um, accomplishments that we've accomplished in our city, at the same time in our goals, and we have great partnership. And I would say the common thing across the room was that, um, Moreno Valley is a great business, um, partner. Right? We help, um, and we find it very important to collaborate and bring businesses here so that people can live, work, and play in their own community. Um, and so I was very impressed with the staff and, um, and with the overall theme of the support that they're getting from the city, city, city staff. So thank you so much, Mike, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Dr. Thornton, Councilmember Cabrera.
Thank you. Uh, so first, I just want to mention about the Equestrian Center and the emergency preparedness event that took place. Uh, unfortunately, I was not able to make it that day. There were a few other things, but I was there the week before uh, with a group of residents cleaning up part of the Equestrian Center, so I'm hoping that, I helped out a little bit. And I'm glad to hear that it did go very well, so I'm looking forward to next year, and I'll definitely be there, so you have my word on that one. Um, so next I want to talk about the, the USPS and mailbox theft. So, um, we, we actually had a meeting. It was several of our staff, Councilmember Thornton was there, and, uh, several people from the USPS, a postal inspector, and, uh, folks from our police department as well, uh, to talk about the mailbox theft issue. Um, I'm sure m- most of us here have heard about maybe one of the streets close to our house being broken into in a mailbox. And so the point of the meeting was to try to figure out, well, how can we better help with addressing this problem? So what we got out of it was that, uh, the most important thing that we as residents can probably do, uh, immediately is sign up for the informed delivery service that the USPS offers. So you can get emails and text messages to, to let you know when your mail is delivered and what is in, and, and what is being delivered that day. So if you're expecting, you know, a check or something that's very valuable, you know that it arrived on, on what day, at what time, so that for, for any, you know, any situation, um, you're better prepared if you, in case you need to report something, or, you know, you can go pick up your mail once it's delivered, right? Uh, to prevent any thieves from getting their hands on it. Um, so please look that up. Uh, it's on our website. We're gonna start putting it on some of our, our social media and our Channel Three as well. Uh, so please sign up for it. It's, it's called Informed Delivery through the U.S. Postal Service, and you can also find it on USPS.gov. So please, please share that with as many people as you can. One thing that they did mention as well was that Moreno Valley goes above and beyond by far compared to other cities when it comes to working with the USPS to try to address this situation. So for example, our staff, uh, actually gives overtime to our public works employees to install the mailboxes for the USPS. So USPS has to order the new reinforced mailboxes. They have to be shipped here, but sometimes they don't have enough personnel to install them. So we go out of our way to, to use our city employees to go out there and install them, so it speeds up the process. And they're very grateful for that. So, um, the, the only thing that I think really, um, that, that I can think of that they actually brought up as well that may be able to help is lighting, lighting for our mailboxes. So I actually do want to ask for consensus and support from my colleagues to explore a pilot program to, uh, install some form of lighting, whether it's, um, solar, solar panel lights, some kind of smaller mobile lights to, um, to keep watch and to help with mailboxes. So, um, I'm hoping that we can find funding, maybe from asset forfeiture money, and if we can put that on one of our study sessions here over the next couple of months, um, I'm requesting support from my colleagues here.
Yep, I support on that.
Thank you, and just a couple of more things, Mayor Protam. Um, so, thank you for that. Um, also, just want to talk, uh, briefly about a few things that I've talked about before. Some of you may be familiar with them, but I will just run down a quick list of things that we're doing here in the city that are, that are happening here that are really good. Um, so first, I just want to start with the San Juan Baptista de Anza Trail. We got a grant a while back, and that's gonna be completed, uh, sometime late next year, I believe. Uh, starts construction in January, so that, that trail actually runs all the way from the Moreno Valley Mall to Lake Paris, all the way down to Menifee area somewhere, so it's a really long trail. to Lake Paris, all the way down to Menifee area somewhere. So it's a really long trail. And so that starts construction in January. The amphitheater, that's coming pretty soon as well. We start construction in January. It'll be completed in summer of next year. We'll have a 600-plus seat amphitheater for concerts and events and all kinds of things. So I'm really looking forward to that. It's gonna be beautiful. Right next to it, we're gonna have a community garden as well. Thank you to our Parks Department for helping out with that, going after grants so we can have a place for cooking classes or irrigation classes, field trips for our students, yoga classes, you name it. We can have all kinds of things there at our first community garden. A community boxing gym, a skate park that was recently opened, the Mova Learns Program where we're helping students at Moreno Valley College pay for their tuition. So we're trying as much as we can to help our youth. Also, the MAPS program and a new library that's coming next summer as well. So for 30 years, this city only had one library, and finally, with new council, we were able to open up a new library at the mall, and now we're working on a third one for next year. So these are all things that are happening here, right? And we need to share that. We need to get the word out. So last thing I want to talk about, just a few words on Diego. And this past weekend, on Saturday, there was a fundraiser for him, actually in my district. And it was amazing to see the support, the turnout of everyone that came out. I wish, you know, you all could have seen it, but the streets were packed with cars. All the neighbors up and down the street were selling food. It was just beautiful to see everyone coming together, you know, in support of Diego and his family. And just the desire to want to give, right? To not pointing fingers or being angry, but trying to provide and be part of the solution and people coming together here in this community. So it was just a beautiful thing to see, you know, everybody giving their hearts for Diego. So that's what I wanted to mention, you know, and I'll leave my comments at that for tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Cabrera. Okay, I know that we're all somber because of what's happened in our community, but we still have to mention some things that are going on. On September 19th, we had a grand opening in District 1 to welcome floor and decor. I know there was a lot of staff there and a lot of community. There was hundreds of people. And I want to say that people were there till 8:00 p.m. in the evening, just, you know, and shopping and just so much going on. So we want to welcome a new business into the city, and it's on Hemlock by the IHOP. And as far as the USPS, I do use that online program, which is the informed delivery status. And if you can, try to have all your bills sent to you only electronically. The majority of the mail that I get is junk mail. That, of course, is interesting as well. But important documents should be sent electronically to you. I understand that not everybody has a computer, and I also understand that a lot of especially elderly people don't have access to this service. So if, you know, if you have an elderly member of your family, please help them with that. And we are working on trying to solve this problem. It's rampant. It's not only in Moreno Valley. And thank you, Councilmember Cabrera, for your suggestion that we add lighting to that. If you can, you can get the cameras also. I think it's called Ring.com. And I have that at my home, and it can see all the way to the mailbox. So that's another suggestion. But there's a lot of things that you can do to deter crime. Also, the neighborhood watch. If you have people in your community, you can take turns on watching out for each other. It's very, very important, and you also get to meet your neighbors. I want to say that the community is mourning the loss of a 13-year-old Diego due to unfortunate events, preventable events that took place at our middle school, at Landmark, to be specific. And that people are hurting in the community, and I know that a lot of groups are joining so that they can take action and be proactive in finding a solution to what's going on in our schools. And saying that, we're going to adjourn this meeting tonight in the memory of Diego, a 13-year-old student who lost his life, and we hope and pray that his life was not lost in vain. Good evening.